So we're going to talk about the MCAS results? That's why you're all here.
Well, if you want to talk, we can talk about how the arts improve in test scores. You want to get that? Oh, we can talk about that. Theater improves reading and music improves men. There are lots of studies on that.
Appreciate it. Join the circle of love and friendship.
Let me start off. Let me start by thanking everyone. And as we, you're going to see as we get closer to seven o'clock, others will join us. And I was hoping his parents would be here too. The theme for this public conversation has to do with the potential play production rent. And so I, this is, we should all be as honest as possible. So we can't visit, right? So don't hold back. This is the time, don't go back. So one of the things that I was concerned about, because before I had this meeting with your teachers about whether Rent should go forward, I left my house, I said, "We can't go forward Rent." So I'm just gonna be honest. I'm gonna say, but by the time, you know, your teachers finished explaining the rationale, I had a change of heart. Right? But there were some mature themes in this play. And some of them can be very, very challenging, some of the themes. And it was really funny, someone said to me, "Well, if this is an R-rated play, then everybody who's in the play has to have a parent." Make sure they're able to get into the play so they can participate. Okay? It's a little silly, but we're beginning to talk some about the severity of this thing called Rent. So I'd like you to do, please sir, Lisa and Stephanie and Andy, you can talk a little bit about the rationale for moving forward with Rent. And then maybe we'll talk about some of the things that has to be done prior to the forums and meetings and everything else.
Sure, I'll try to summarize the long story. You guys jump in too. You know, we were planning to do Chicago and we got notice late that we were not able to do Chicago. We applied for the rights back in the spring and then we were told just a couple of weeks ago, "No, sorry, there's a professional company coming to Boston, you can't do it." And we even tried to fight it. We were like, "Look, this is, we're a high school and now we're away from Boston. Really, we're gonna draw people?" And they're like, "No, sorry, can't..." Like it was non-negotiable. So Stephanie and I turned to each other and we're like, "Oh no, there were so many students really excited. We've been trying to revitalize music. We had a lot of students who weren't normally involved with us who were really excited." So we started brainstorming some other things that we could do. And just coincidentally, not related to this project at all, on my first day in musical theater class, and some of these students are in that class, I just asked them to write on note cards a little bit about themselves. And one of the questions I asked them was, "Give me three of your favorite musicals." And that had nothing to do with the show that we were doing here. I just wanted to know, as I'm picking songs for them to work on throughout the semester, that I've got an idea of what they already know and what they're interested in. A vast majority of them said Rent. A very, like, probably only one student in the class said, "Rent is in my top three." And so we were talking, like, we're throwing out all these other shows and Rent is not even, because we're like afraid to do that. We just know that you would go, "No." And then we kept coming back to it. We kept coming back to it. They love it, they love it, they love it.
And we also looked at who we have. That goes into picking our season every year.
Yeah.
When we look at the students that we have in our program, not to say that there won't be new ones every year, we hope that there are, but we also have to respect the students that come out every year and join us. And when we look at the students, it's certainly a viable choice.
Yeah, so that brought, then it was like, "Well, maybe we can do that. That's gonna get the excitement. It's a good match for the kids we have." And then we started, "Well, if we're really gonna do it, let's talk to Andy." So we called Andy up and she was really excited about it.
And her Andy.
So the eight block lights up on hand.
Before we even went to Mike, we're like, "Let's talk to Andy. Do you think this is a crazy idea?" And she ran with it and we started rolling on the idea of having workshops with our students, with the greater community, and really making this a meaningful project. And she was very excited about it. Mike was very excited. At that point, we started talking with Dr. Kerbel and, as he said, we maybe convinced him. So I think now it's become into a much larger community project, which excites all of us as educators. The students are really excited and that's why so many of them agreed to come tonight, that it's more than just a show. It's an opportunity to make connections for them and to, not just community connections, but connections to their own life. And I think it has the power to impact their own choices as well as their friends' choices.
Want me to talk a little bit about our side of this? So Chris and I, after I got the first initial phone call, started talking about how awesome it would be if this school put on Rent with very selfish reasons. Our feeling was that we, as the facilitators of the Beacon Coalition, which is our substance abuse prevention, high-risk prevention coalition in the community, have been struggling to find a vehicle to get a message across to parents who are not, as you say, the choir. They're singing to the choir. And the idea of using the Spring Musical that so many people come out to every year was just awesome. Unlike the rest of you, I really wasn't afraid of it right away. I knew that several, you know, high schools had done it and actually had made some calls and called some principals to ask them how it went at other schools, what the issues were. It is, as I said in the meeting with Dr. Kerbel, I said, "You know, we know we're asking you to push the envelope. Like, that's what we're asking, but with a reason behind it." And that reason being that if we can use this as part of a larger project to get information about what's really happening in the community and what our issues are, that it will be so valuable in so many ways. And one of the things that we struggle with in Newburyport is, is actually a perception that, from some students, that more kids are doing high-risk behaviors than really are. And then from the community, that nobody's really doing them. So it's like this weird flip-flop. So anytime that we can do a community event, that we can actually share information about what's happening in the community, it's great to start to try to change those perceptions and ultimately try to change behavior that way. So when we started talking about this, we, Chris and I were talking about what we need to go into, into this. We started thinking up ideas, even in our initial meeting with Mr. Parent, we were thinking of things that would need to happen. And that was everything from providing resources and both resources as well as kind of information to anybody who comes to the show, that there needs to be some way of doing a dialogue or discussion after the show, to having that built into it. Doing PSAs leading up to the show, so using, using the show as a way to kind of get some of our data out to students and the community. Now, the issues, I do want to say that the issues in the show are not the same issues that we're seeing in Newburyport. However, it gives us a way to talk about the issues that we are seeing in Newburyport. I look at it as a story about consequences. When you, when you watch the play Rent, it does not glorify any of the negative behavior. It actually does the opposite. It tells the story of making a bad choice and living with repercussions, whether it's drug use or stripping. I like, whatever word did I want to use for that? So, I mean, to me, it's all about consequences. And that is so much of the message that we want to get across to young people, is that your actions have consequences. And on the flip side, it is a story of hope and love and about having people around you to support you, which I also think is such an important theme. So for us, even though it does have some edgy themes, reality is, is it speaks to a different generation. The music is awesome. The characters are very real, very, very real to today's kids and adults. And that if we could use it to help kind of get that information across, it would be a benefit to everyone.
I mean, to speak to the personal heartstrings of the show, the show premiered on Broadway when I was a senior in high school. And when I saw the show, I guarantee you that I've never once watched that show and thought, "Oh, that's a really great idea. I'm gonna engage in that." I never once saw the show and thought, "Oh, that's a good example of what we should be doing." What I saw was, if I don't change my behavior, or if I don't think twice about something that I'm gonna do, that could be me. And that did change decisions that I made moving forward in my life. And for so many of our students who are involved in theater, seeing theater and how alive it is in us helps us process those decisions we have to make in our lives. But also, the great thing about theater is that it helps others, even those that are not involved, really think about, because they can see themselves in the characters. And when a student comes to see this show and sees one of their peers taking a role who has to make a decision that affects the rest of their life, it's so easy to think that that could be me. "What could I do differently? Or is there gonna be someone there to help me when I'm faced with this decision?" So I think that there's a, there's a very severe reality to, you're right. Are we dealing with heroin and are we dealing with eight rampant HIV in Newburyport? No. Are we dealing with students having unprotected sex?
But are we dealing with unprotected sex?
You bet.
Yes.
Yes. And that's a result. And it's a bitter pill to swallow, especially when we're so, when we're young, and I'm not that old, but I remember being this young, I know the feeling of being invincible. That's not gonna happen to me. And, you know, I'm educated and I'm smart and, you know, and things do happen. There's a lot to be learned.
We do have students of all four grades too, so if you want a student perspective, you've got a wide variety of you.
Can I ask, excuse me, can I ask, I think the point you made, Andy, is that, because I, I'm willing to just introduce where I come from on this. I think it's a very controversial play. I think it does offer a lot of opportunities to look at issues. I also believe, I guess what's most important first and foremost, that any of the players, all of you are comfortable and taking part. Your parents are comfortable and you take your part?
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, when I first found out about it, I immediately told my parents and they were, they're huge supporters of the production itself. And then when they found out, they said it was a great idea for it.
And the community can accept the content. And that the content has some meaning or has some, meets some need in this community. You've mentioned a couple areas. One area, and I haven't seen the play, I've read a lot about it, I'm familiar with a lot of the issues, and I'll touch on that briefly shortly, around gay, lesbian, transgender stuff. But one of the, I think one of the key issues, or one of the key things that I'm a little concerned about is how drugs are portrayed in the play. And recognizing the fact, though, that as a group, creatively or with values, you can dampen some of that stuff down.
It's actually, drug use isn't actually prevalent in the play. There's references to it and there's, I believe, only one scene where somebody is looking for it.
And another character.
Just forgive me, I'm just working with what, the Broadway places. I know this is a school version. I just really think with all this school has been through in terms of getting a clear message to people, kids, that message needs to be consistent. I also, you know, my own personal experience, I've worked with troubled kids for like 25, more than 25 years. And back in the late 80s and early 90s, Governor Bill Weld, in response to a high suicide rate in gay and lesbian students, formed the first commission in the country for gay and lesbian students. And we were the first state to bring in policies and rules to keep gay and lesbian students safe. And as I was, you know, researching this whole issue a little bit, it troubles me, and you kids know as well, it troubles me, that in the last year, we had situations like involving the young Lady Phoebe Prince in some ad, who committed suicide, who was just a boy, on the internet today, a story of him, a Canadian young man, 15 years old, who committed suicide as a result of bullying and depression. So, I mean, it's out there and to me, and again, I worked with a lot of kids who, quite frankly, between 1989 and 1992, not a lot, but a number of kids I worked closely with who committed suicide. And when I think of, and roughly at that point, 30% of all suicides in Massachusetts were of lesbian and gay youth. So when I think of those kids in between 89 and 92, the early 90s, by all, by all reason, they should be here today. Not in this room, but they should be, you know, alive. And they're not. And I think that when you take on something like this, you really need to take it on with a recognition of what happened before you, what's happening now, what's gonna happen tomorrow. You need to proceed in a way that has as much humanity and decency as possible. It isn't about being avant-garde, it's not about being in your face, it's about doing something thoughtful and doing something that has the resources and support. Because like you say, forums, debriefing, follow-up is gonna be really important, because things are gonna get pushed to the surface. And if you don't have the safety net, if you don't have the response people, one of the first things that, that I learned to do, or I was trained to do, was be a GLIS safe spot. Meaning, in my office, I had a little sticker on my door that said, "Anyone who, you know, had any of the issues could come, it was safe to come talk to me." I used to have it in my appointment post, there was this little GLIS sticker, because that's what it was initially called. And I, you know, so I personally know the importance of it and I just, I guess my message is to the, the students here, that, you know, this is a big responsibility. And, you know, it's thrilling to take part in it, but it's also a very serious thing. And, you know, I'm not against, I'm not, I'm not totally against, I just want to make sure everyone's comfortable with it, and make sure the parents are comfortable with it. I want to make sure the community can embrace what it's all about. And again, I just want to make sure whatever's done is done with as much humanity and decency as possible, just in memory of, you know, those who have struggled before, those who have struggled today, and those who, you know, we all hope to help tomorrow.
I'm shooting without a script right now, but we'll see what happens. While my initial reaction to finding out that we were doing Rent might have been to giggle like a schoolgirl, the next day, I thought about how serious the, like, themes of the play were. So I would agree that it definitely needs to be taken on with an air of maturity and responsibility. And that's the, the only way I would feel uncomfortable is if the other members of the cast didn't take it as seriously as I did.
And, well, I'm a huge fan of production and I remember the first time I saw it, you laughed and you cried and at the end of it, you feel as if you've been in their lives. Like, you feel really supported by the characters because throughout the story, there is a whole lot of acceptance. Like, you learn the consequences, but in the end, the characters come together and they still support each other through their hard times. And I think, I know my personal experience from watching Rent the first time, I really felt, like, I felt inspired to do better in my life. And I think, I, I know everyone here is really excited for the production. And I know myself, if I went into this production, I think I would just have a clear and open mind and be willing to accept people's questions and be able to just, I don't know how to say it, just like, try my best to show people what we can do with it and help the community.
When we met with Dr. Kerbel that Friday, he had mentioned that he was gonna be contacting, you know, folks who didn't feel as though about this idea. And we said, Lisa and I feel very stoned, that our students, these are our people. And with all due respect to them, we definitely wanted Dr. Kerbel to start talking, but we felt we needed to talk to them. We need to let them know what was going on behind the scenes, if you will. It would be unfair for them to find out any other way. And so we called an emergency meeting, anyone thinking they might want to participate in the Spring Musical, please come to the chorus room, of which, there were a lot more than students, a lot more than you see here, students that were present at that meeting. And so we broke the news about Chicago and then we told them what our intentions were. And Mr. Parent was there, I mean, it was almost, well, the reaction was very intense, but, Andy spoke to the students and said to them, "If we want to do this, if this is something we feel passionate about, you are now ambassadors of this project." And we gave them some, you know, key things to kind of, you know, yes, you want to be thrilled and go out there and say, "Oh my gosh, do you think, you can't believe this was actually something we could do." But more importantly, we want to represent this message and we want to represent this idea. And I, from that moment forward, it's been two weeks now, right? Almost two weeks now? Or has it been a week and a half now? We've had nothing but very thoughtful responses from people in the community, what little we've heard from them, and nothing but the utmost of maturity and passion from our students. They, I think, and you guys can certainly speak to this, they see the gravity of this experience and they see, and how empowered is it to be an artist and not only go out there and put on a phenomenal show, but more importantly, to be able to send a message. So I think that they're already doing their part, which is great.
There's been a steady stream of reflective comments and questions, both from students and parents.
Yeah, I, it's interesting, it's interesting to get a little bit more of the history, Steve, particularly about, about Massachusetts being one of the first states in the league.
The first state. First state ever to have a governor-backed commission.
But I also, something that has, that has been on my mind for years is that this is one of the few high schools that doesn't have a gay straight alliance. And I have been making inquiries for several years to try to get some kids to step up and make that happen. Because I think that that is, every high school that I've talked to, every, every gay straight alliance group that I've talked to in high schools, find that to be a very powerful source of support, of community, of education. My feeling, as somebody who has been both involved in theater and been involved in dealing with these issues professionally, is that the culture, it's a very different culture than the one I grew up in. It's very different now. And I understand, and I've had a number of conversations in the community that have been quite as enthusiastic about this as the ones you guys have been having. But fundamentally, my belief is this, that these dynamics are out there, these questions are out there, these challenges are out there. And you could either try to cut your kids off from dealing with them and just assume you can keep them safe and that they're not gonna wander next door and look at the neighbor's computer. Or you can give kids the tools to make choices, to understand that these are choices that you can make. And they may not all be ready to use those tools as a factor. But to me, the odds are a lot better that, that when you give the kids the information they need and help them process that, the odds are a lot better that the choices they make are gonna be constructive than if you bury your head in sand. And, you know, I, my personal feeling is, I would support this production. And I have been advocating for this production in the community, to the people who are coming to me, you know, expressing concerns about it. You know, I, I don't, I don't expect, unless the school community feels it, I don't expect that this is gonna come to a vote for us. This is a decision that you're making. And it'd be a decision that is not without controversy. It is gonna be a common view, I think, to understand the magnitude of these issues and, and help the community to understand them. And I think, you know, I, everything I've seen about you guys is, I believe that you can do that very effectively. And I should ask a lot, but, but, you know, as you said, in 1968, the whole world was watching.
I think there's a history in our community of coming through and being supportive and being understanding and looking for those occasional messages. Recently, looking back at House of Cristo and how that came together and how the community ultimately came back and supported that controversial in its approach to doing things. The summer stock group that we did with Miami Project, again, seeing how the community came together, when we even heard there was a complaint about coming to protest the fact that we were doing Miami Project here, was, was one of the proudest moments, a Newburyport resident that I can ever remember. And I think that will happen again. That it will happen again, I think, as Mr. Colvin said, if you approach it with the thoughtfulness, with the seriousness. And it still is a musical with the fun that it deserves. You can't say, "Oh, this is just becoming a project that still needs to..." And I know you will have some fun with it, it's a great show. The kind of feedback that I've had, and granted, people that have been contacting me are probably more your parents and other people who have supported theater over the years, has been positive. They look at it as a challenge. They look at it as a dramatic and musical challenge for you guys. Because one of the things I love about these choices is every time, and one of these choices is every time they find a way to make you stretch that little bit more. And we're seeing that again here. It's gonna be a challenging show, it's gonna require a lot of work, but I have complete faith that you and the community is gonna be proud of themselves. Because I know the kind of, the kind of approach you have to developing your characters and to working. There's so much more time spent on developing characters in this, in this group than what I've seen in many other theater productions. And even for the lighthearted shows that we've done, the time invested in developing characters is so important. And while you do that, you can develop the character, but also talk about it. Make that a learning experience for your peers and learn from them as you go forward. And I think that'll, that'll make it an even, that much better presentation.
We have just a, just a couple minutes left. Any of the students want to add? Add, and then we'll go to Dominique. Any of the students want to say something? Go on.
I just want to say I'm really passionate about this play and I think I can take that passion in. I think all of us can really say this when we're interested in this, that we can really commit to these characters and show the community. I think it'll be a jumpstart to change in the community and I think it'll open people's eyes to the reality.
As far as a learning experience goes, I know, for me at least, and probably for most of you guys, drug use and sex is not something that I would go to a teacher to talk about when I wanted to talk about it, or to my parents, maybe. Maybe you guys have close relationships with your parents. So when we get a show like this that presents us with the opportunity to express the things that we're holding inside, I think it's a very powerful learning experience. And having you two to talk to, I know, has been very helpful for me.
It's like equivalent to kind of almost taking like a class about like sex, drugs and alcohol and stuff, but, and like watching like a boring video saying like, "Oh, this is blah, 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 and he made these choices," in like some video, but like, it's the same thing almost, but just with music and actors and costumes and set and all this. So it, it's like equivalent to kind of the educational.
Literally the next day, right after we had this discussion, a play ended up in Lisa's box, someone's pursuit to have us put on this show that they wrote about, "Don't drink." And it was like, "Don't, you're loaded." And that's the kind of stuff that just doesn't, that's not it.
It doesn't resonate.
That's not it.
They'll laugh.
We just like tweet. This, this show is so real, the characters and the situations are so real. And that's what makes it a powerful piece of theater and a good way to get the message across.
Yeah, it's scary.
It's, because it's so real, it's, it's gonna be such a challenge to try and make it that real. But I can only speak for myself, but it's a challenge I am fully committed to taking down and conquering it. And standing on top of it and saying, "Guess what? I just challenged it."
Just remember that you want to do that with humanity and decency.
Of course.
I mean that. That's really important to me, okay? You can go rah rah rah, but you need to look back at the history, you need to look back at what people have gone through, the pain people have suffered, the fact that this play and the gentleman that wrote it, wrote it in a way that would appeal to a wider audience. Now, in bringing it to a public school, you're automatically narrowing that audience. You're not gonna be able to have young kids come to see this. You may not attract older, senior citizens to this play. You're gonna narrow your audience and need to make the message you deliver...
You're going to narrow your audience and need to make the message you deliver specific to that audience with the follow-ups and supports that people have talked about here, okay? It's not going to be about standing on somebody's throat. Can't be. Can't be. Well, you just talked about conquering.
I think it's conquering, the challenge of stuff, the character, I think.
Okay, well, I misunderstood. I just, I thought I made a message earlier about being human and decent, not about conquering.
It's not about conquering a specific person, it's about the challenges that I'm feeling right now about trying to produce a real character. I want to take those challenges on within me and be able to produce a real character.
Yeah.
And I don't know what I was going to say, but I think it was relevant.
Very sad.
No, you said it.
Let's see, that's, you know, I'm looking at the time, so I think that Alex, then we have to move on.
The best way to reach people is through a narrative, like rent or whatever. I mean, we just watched another movie in one of our phys ed classes about the dangers of drugs. I mean, it was, it resonated with me. However, it's, the only way to really get people historically, and just, this is the way people are, is to tell a story about it. And we can start with what Cole said before, you have to be very sensitive in how you do it. But if you, I think if you do a good job, I think it'll be extremely effective.
I wanted to add to what you said about the age limit. When Anne Overhype put on last year and they didn't allow anyone over the age of 14, I mean, under the age of 14 to come. So several communities have had a minimum age that you have to be old enough to come and see it. Or at least warnings that it has very mature content.
Do you have a few time, a little, just 30 seconds about what's happening as far?
Sure. Currently, in fact, many of these students are in the show that we're doing right now, The Witch of Blackford Pond. And that is a family-appropriate show. It's based on a young adult novel from 1957, won the Newbury Award. So we are planning to also do a school show for the moment.
We are very aware of doing a family audience as well.
Eight kids in the chorus.
I do, my daughter's one of them.
Well, I want to thank, I want to thank everybody for being here, and especially, you know, the students who took a break from practicing tonight. So thank you all, and Cole, I hear good news about you, aren't you, I believe I was. I'm just going to be in a production? You don't have to share it though, you can tell us.
I'm doing a production in Boston Children's Theater and the Velvet Teen Rabbit. Awesome, congratulations.
Who do you play?
The Velvet Teen Rabbit.
To, in the absence of Mayor Holliday, I'd like to call this meeting to order.
Mr. Cole?
Here.
Ms. Sweeney? Mr. Menon?
Here.
Mayor Holliday is absent. Ms. Weaver?
Present.
Mr. DeCanta?
Here.
Mr. Keel?
Here. Could I stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
I'd like to read the mission statement of the Newbury Court Public Schools. The Newbury Court Public Schools are committed to the intellectual, physical, social development and engagement of every student within a culture of high expectations for individual and group learning. Our students experience rigorous academic challenge, are intellectually curious, and express themselves creatively. Our students enhance their well-being by applying knowledge and skills about nutrition, fitness, and healthy behaviors. Our schools are an inclusive and supportive community. As part of this community, our students demonstrate values of personal integrity, sensitivity, and social responsibility. Our schools partner with parents and community in significant ways to help achieve their mission. Members of our school community, teachers, parents, staff, and administration, support this mission every day, in every classroom, on every field of play, and in every activity. We'll open this meeting with a period of public comment. If there is anybody in attendance who would like to offer a comment, this is the first of two sessions. Dr. Orlando?
I sort of walked in on the regular meeting that I thought was occurring, and I must admit that I heard some very interesting things. And unfortunately, could not express an opinion in the five minutes allocated, and rightfully so. I think you should listen to the students. And I'm not going to address that particular aspect of things, but I will caution you and encourage you, as I have said before. If you want to engage the public in conversation, you should make sure that on your agenda, the public knows what you're talking about. Because I think that's fair and reasonable. I don't know anything about what was going on a little while ago, but it certainly sounds like it represents a very controversial issue. I may be wrong. And if you chose to make it a point of public conversation, then the public should have been made aware of that. And that's all I would like to say.
I mean, usually we don't respond, but my understanding.
You don't have to, it's a comment, choose whatever you wish. I don't want to get anybody in trouble. Again, I'm not interested in the topic of that particular conversation, but it's public conversation in general.
Any additional comments? Hearing none, if we could move to the consent agenda. Mr. Cole filling in, Ms. Sweeney, are there any warrants?
Yes, there are, two warrants. For the first, I move that the following main bills of the Newbury Court Public Schools, amounting in the aggregate to $4,734.24, be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And the second warrant, I move that the following main bills of the Newbury Court Public Schools, amounting in the aggregate to $237,916.33, be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts for any of the members present.
Second.
Any discussion? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have a set of minutes, Monday, October 3, 2011, to adjourn motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Can't have a second, so. Any discussion, additions, amendments, commentary to be offered?
Great job, as usual.
There are none, all in favor, accepting the minutes, is submitted?
Aye.
Opposed? We move on to the next item on our agenda, which will relocate me. And I'm going to turn this over, this is the discussion of our spring 2011 MCAS. Oh, I'm sorry, Alex, that's right, I apologize.
So, a lot of things are happening at the high school in the next few weeks. First of all, the National Honor Society is hosting a blood drive on Thursday for a 17 and 18-year-old, so basically just the senior class of some junior years. It's actually going to be in this room. And the National Honor Society will be working all day to make sure everyone is good. And all of the donors are moving slowly.
What was the date of that?
Thursday, so October 20. Also, the new student portal for managing our grades, X2, is basically, all of the teachers are using it now. And it's actually really convenient. I can check my transcripts and grades when I'm working on it. It saves time in class because we don't have to constantly ask for updates on our averages. And it's really making it look easier and students are using it. So let's hope that continues. Also, this Saturday, the class of 2013 is hosting a club fair, promotion of the day, I think until 4:00 PM. And I'm not quite sure what it entails, but I do know I'm volunteering for it. I have to find out what I have to actually do. And also to follow up on the last meeting, the freshman class do have an advisory now. Mrs. Rakowski, the new art teacher, has stepped up and they are meeting with possible people who are interested in running for office tomorrow. And finally, Color Day is a month away. The process has started, and it, already, there are signs of competition and excitement going throughout the school. The senior class is basing their theme off reality TV this year. So let's hope it'll be, I hope it'll be awesome. The seniors are going to bring home the job, so, and that's, that's it.
Yep. Before Alex leaves, I had an opportunity to interview Alex on this great show called Superintendent Unplugged.
Awesome.
And Alex was my guest. And if you have a chance to be, it's been airing on Port Media, and Alex was, he was great. He offered terrific advice to parents and colleagues, fellow students, as well as new students coming into the device. Great. Now, I think I will turn this over to Dr. Kerbel for introduction and discussion. Okay. MCAS results? Thank you. Would like to do it this time, is present the MCAS results to the community. And I'm going to ask Angelo Dick, the supervisor for curriculum, to co-present with me. Well, let's see. Angelo, we need some help. The, so while we're getting this up and running, let me just start, at least I tell myself to. We have a lot of slides to go over and a lot of data to review, but we're going to do this in a very powerful, efficient, and effective way. Have you heard those before, Eric?
Oh, yes, I have.
So everyone has a copy of the report. This is, so there was, there was an original report sent out over the weekend. Today, you were sent an update, an updated one. Right, the handouts reflected updated one staff got, and updated one mailed today around, somewhere around 5:00, 5:30. So everyone has, should have the latest. So the way Angelo and I will present, I will open up, make a few remarks. Angelo will talk about English Language Arts, I will talk about mathematics, Angelo will talk about science scores. Okay, and then I'll make a closing statement. So while we're waiting for everything to be just about ready, just want to say thank you to Kathy Manning. Take a look at this report, all Kathy, thank goodness for Kathy Manning. Okay, and I want to thank Angelo also for all of her work and help. Also want to thank teachers who took a look at our draft, took a look at, oh, some original findings and recommendations. I sent those to a lot of our teacher leaders who worked on, who worked on these papers with staff and sent back remarks to us. So some of the work reflects their comments. They sent out the original MCAS results over the weekend. We got back several remarks saying to check a few numbers, which we did. That really helped us. We feel really confident that everything we have this time around is fairly accurate. So I want to thank anyone who read it, sent us notes, I want to thank you. It's really, really nice to know that you're going to send something out that people want to read it and give feedback, so that's great. These are 2011 MCAS screen scores. If you go to the next slide, based upon the curriculum frameworks and taking into account our own curriculum, whether it's aligned to the frameworks. We want to also take into account the teaching and learning that goes on in classrooms, as well as any practice of preparation students were given in order to prepare for the MCAS tests. If you take a look at what was tested in 2011, you can see grades three through eight with the English Language Arts test and grade 10. Mathematics, the same grades, three through eight, and 10th grade. Science and technology in 10th grade had retakes, but science and technology was given in 5th grade and 8th grade. Biology was given in 9th grade. So when we give the scores later on, we start making comparisons. What Angelo and I did is took out grade 10 scores, because they only reflected, in science, they only reflected less than a dozen students. And so just to make sure that we're comparing apples to apples, we looked at the biology test scores from last year, okay, as well as biology scores this year. Okay, so turn this over to Angelo.
All right, we're going to start with English Language Arts. And I am very happy to announce that there was improvement across the district in this content area. So we're starting to feel, I think, and reap some of the benefits of all the work that we've put into our literacy initiative over the last several years. Whenever you look at scores like this, I'll walk you through some of these slides in the beginning because they'll be the same for English Language Arts, for math, and for science. So I'll explain what you're looking at for each of them, just in English Language Arts, and then it'll become second nature to you. This is, this shows you how many of our students were in the advanced, above proficient and proficient range versus the state, our needs improvement, bands, and warning, and failed, for each of the grade levels. And as you can see, we were scoring, it's all good news, we scored above the state level at every grade level here. And as we look, so what you want to see when you look at a chart like this is you want to see that our scores are higher than the state in advanced and proficient, and lower than the state in needs improvement and in warning. And that is the case here with English Language Arts in each grade. And that is the case here with English Language Arts in each, in each grade level. This breaks out each of the performance levels. This is for grades three, four, and five. And we're looking at the percentage of students as we look at these numbers here. So this kind of fuchsia colors, it's hard to tell the difference in the colors, isn't it, the way it's projected? This is kind of a fuchsia and a red and, I don't know what happens, that color kind of green, so it's not appearing that way up here. But this is our advanced category, our proficient category, and the percentage of students that are in those categories. Oh, that helps a lot. Thank you, Stephanie. Needs improvement, which I'm happy to say has, is starting to reduce. We have a lot of students in needs improvement over the last several years. We're starting to see a reduction in the students in needs, in needs improvement, and an increase in our students in the proficient area. We want to continue that movement in that direction. Okay? And this is showing a comparison to last year. The stars represent improvement in which, in which category. So as you can see, we've got a star in the advanced category, so we showed improvement in our advanced scores at each grade level. We showed improvement in our proficient scores in grades four and five. And we saw a reduction in our needs improvement scores for grades four and five, and a reduction in our warning scores for grades three and five. That's what those stars are representing. I think it's always important, because I've talked to you the last few years about the fact that we've had more children than we'd like to see in the needs improvement category. So we know it's really important to break that category into bands. This category has four bands in it. This is the highest band, closest to proficient, to the lowest band, which is closest to warning. So as we look at this, this has a lot of information on this chart. We wanted to make that available to you. And I'm going to really highlight looking at those students who are really in these two upper bands, because those are students who are very close to moving to proficient, within just several points of moving to the next level. So, you know, when we look at grade three, 37% of the students who are scoring in the needs improvement category are in this, the highest band within needs improvement. In grade four, we have 35% of the students scoring in needs improvement that are in this, this band closest to proficient. In grade five, 35%. So it's really important that we focus on populations that are here and continue that movement in the other direction. In past years, people have asked about the subgroup categories within this, so that information is what's in the table off to the right of your page. You can see for each grade level, how many students are in each subcategory, in each subgroup within these categories. This is the percentage of students out of the total number of students. So not the percentage of the aggregate, but out of the total number of students within them here. This is the same view for grades six, seven, eight, and 10. Isn't this nice? See this ladder just declining, and this growing and growing? I think it's very exciting. I think one of the things that you can glean from this view is as we move through the grades in our school district, our scores are getting better and better in ELA. We have many more students in the advanced and proficient categories when we look at our middle school and high school scores, and less in needs improvement. We have improvement in seven categories, as you can see here, indicated by the stars. We had improvement for grades six and seven in advanced, and improvement for grades eight and 10 in proficient, and reduction for grades six and 10 in needs improvement, and a reduction in warning for grades six. And again, this is the same chart that you saw when we looked at grades three through five, that shows how we broke out the students in the distribution of the bands within needs improvement. The good news is there's many less students in needs improvement when we're looking at grades six through 10. But as you can see, majority of them aren't here. We do have, you know, this looks like more than it is, but look at the amount of students that are actually in that category. Those are the actual numbers of students. Read to everybody what we said. We did that. Knowing how important it was to look at the students in the bands of needs improvement, we also thought it was really important to break out the data for the students who are in the upper band of proficient, those students who are getting ready to move into advanced, and to see how many students we have in that category. So to help you read this chart, this is the percentage of the students in the highest band, so the percentage of the students within proficient that are in this highest band at each of the grade levels. And we start with grade three, and we work up to grade eight. This is the percentage, this shows the number of students, and this is the percentage of all the students who were in the proficient category. Okay? I know the first time that I looked at this slide, I was like, wow, the percentages, the numbers, I was a little confused. So, you know, if you take a look at that within, so the only band that we broke out with imperfect was this upper band, those students who are ready to move into advanced. So that's what you're looking at, percentages of those students, imperfect that are on the cusp of advanced. Okay? And it's always good to look at our cohorts and see, track the same students over time. And so if, I'm going to move to this side, because it makes a little more sense. The cohorts are color-coded. They move across the charts this way as you read that. So as we look at grade three this year, even, you know, we see some improvement over grade three scores. So when we read it in this direction, we're comparing different groups of students in the same grade level from year to year. And when we follow the color-coded diagonal, that's the same group of students as they move through the various grade levels. Okay? So, you know, looking at this, we see some improvement from, I mean, we see a slight reduction in our scores from students moving from grade three to grade four. And that has been a traditional dip for us in the district. This one is not as severe. I see that as good news. It's less of a dip than we've had in previous years. As we look at our students moving from grade four to grade five, there was a significant increase in their scores. And the same thing from grade five to grade six, grade seven to grade eight, grade eight to grade nine, and grade eight to 10, because we don't test in ELA in grade nine. So we're seeing significant increase from grade five on. How do we do comparatively? We usually look at three different groups of schools, our comparative communities, our geographic proximity communities, and the communities that we aspire to. So off to the left are our fourth grade scores in comparison. In red is Newburyport, and the percentage of students that fell in those categories in the middle are eighth grade scores, and all the way to the right are our 10th grade scores. And, you know, I think it's important to point out on our 10th grade scores that Newburyport is at the top of two of those categories in our comparative and geographic communities. And I think it's also important to note that there's only a five-point percentage difference in all of these aspiring communities, and we're following, we're falling in the middle there. So we see the scores go up as we look across the grade levels. We see our placement when those scores go up as we look across the grade levels as well. So, kind of an overview of the findings as we look at our ELA data for the high school. We saw that 94% of our students were in the advanced and proficient categories, yay. Fewer students were in advanced than in proficient. The scores have held steady over five, over a five-year period, and that consistency is wonderful to see. The cohorts have improved from grade eight consistently, and all of the groups at the high school made AYP or adequate yearly progress. The middle school, 91% of our eighth grade students were in the advanced and proficient categories. There were increased scores at grade six and eight. There were, there was consistent growth in all of the cohorts, as I showed you. A 20% gain from grades five to six. There were gains in the advanced categories, as you saw in some of the earlier graphs. And all of the subgroups did make AYP at the middle school as well. The elementary school, there was growth, grades three, four, and five, growth in the advanced category. 39% of our students at grade four scored in the needs improvement or warning category. This is something we still need to spend a lot of energy on. There were higher percentages of students in the upper bands of needs improvement, which is good. All subgroups did make AYP, and we find that with a little bit deeper analysis, our subgroup students are still struggling with open response and competition questions. So we'll focus additional on this detail. Based on the findings, this is what Dr. Kerbel was talking about when he said he sent a presentation. We sent the presentation, this component of the presentation from last year out for feedback to our teachers and our administrators, looking at what work was done last year in efforts to improve, and then what people would like to focus on this year in an effort to improve. So the high school is going to continue to disaggregate the data. They're going to analyze student responses. They're going to continue to always be working on instructional alignment. We have the new Common Core standards that I've talked to you about this year. That will be part of the instructional alignment. That will need to happen at all levels. They provide resources for the writing lab. They're going to embed MCAS type questions in their assessment. And at the high school, we do have a formalized MCAS academic support program, and that will continue. For the middle school and elementary school, they, she will be disaggregating the data. They're going to focus their energy on writing for second year. We started that last year. They're going to continue that focus. We're working this year on building literacy data teams, pre-K through eight in the district. We're going to continue to utilize coaching strategically with our teachers, continue to focus on looking at student work, continue to use assessment to drive instruction. We're going to implement grader assessment data to inform teachers, so more data, we're collecting more data than we have in the past that can help give teachers a full picture of their students' growth and performance. We're going to continue the after-school intervention programs that we started, K through two last year, and we hope to expand them from three to five this year. We're going to provide students with weekly after-school support from classroom teachers. We would like to use team meetings to discuss instructional practices, monitor differentiation of instruction, and continue to implement a high level of professional development in literacy.
Any questions?
Yeah. Do you want, do you want us to take questions in between? I think I can.
Maybe you can speak to this at the end, because my question is basically relative to fourth grade. I don't, I just don't understand it. I'm wondering if there's a development, I'm not sure that fourth grade, I mean, or is this common in other districts that the dips happen in the fourth grade? Because they seem to be doing okay in third. It's the only dip in the whole scale.
I know. I can, I can speak to a couple components that, you know, that we've kind of thought about.
Also, we still got to get through math and science.
Right, right. When we look at fourth grade, it's been something that's been a focus for several years. The dip is consistent for us in fourth grade. It's, it's good to see that it was less this year than it has been. One of the big changes that happens in the fourth grade testing that does not happen in third grade is a writing component. And it was one of the reasons that we focused so heavily on writing last year, particularly in the fourth grade, and exposing students to MCAS-like writing assignments as they worked throughout the year. As a matter of fact, we even developed interim assessments that the students were given to help them practice and become more familiar with the kinds of writing that they would be expected to do on a test like the MCAS. I think we will continue that focus with our fourth graders, as well as looking at the way they're responding to their reading. That is another component where they're doing, either they're reading and then they have to respond in a short answer or an open response to what they've read. And that oftentimes has multiple pieces to that response. So really being able to take apart a piece of text and identify how you would respond to different components of that test. So those are some focus areas.
I have two, hopefully quick questions. On one, is it possible, based on where the kids are scoring in terms of needs improvement or warning, can you extrapolate any conclusions at all about the impact of the inclusionary practices on these scores, or is that still, yet to go down still?
That's a great question. I feel like I'd rather respond to that after we've had a chance to drill down a little further. I know Karen Brann is here today, and I don't know if Karen, you had anything you'd like to say, speak to that?
I'm still looking at the data, and one of the things is the subgroup of special education or students with disabilities is only reported out if there are more than 40 students in that category. One of the things that I do is I take every, every grade, and I calculate out even students less than 40 in that category to see if they have made their, if they're, if they've made their degree of improvement. So I'm still looking at that data. It's really hard to see if it's the inclusionary practices or if it's their special education program, but we are looking at that.
And just very, very quickly, in terms of going from proficient to advanced, what do the teachers, what are the instructional strategies that you might use to get kids over that?
That's where really doing a deeper analysis comes in, for us to really look at who are those students in that category, and what were the kinds of questions that they were struggling with? So what are the focus areas? This will come actually right down to the type of question, analyzing if we've got any kind of theme developing within those types of questions, and then work very specifically on, in those areas. Thank you.
I'm going to talk about mathematics. We have some good news, some concerns, so I wanted to do is, we scored with some of those scores. If you take a look at, one of the things that we look at first, we look at to see if Newburyport at least outperformed the state. So we look at grade three outperforming the state, grade four, and grade five had scores that were equal to. Grade six, the Newburyport scores were, were actually below the state average. Grade seven, eight, and nine, and seven, eight, and 10 were above the state average. I look at this, and I think, I look at, I look at mathematics, grade 10, and this to me is, is our role model. This is a standard. This is terrific. And 90% of the students here were above, were advanced or proficient, and later on you're going to see their advanced scores around 64%, which really puts you in good company around the state. The good news, look on the far side under the warning and fail category, Newburyport's averages here were less than the state, which is, which is good. So everybody was jammed in the needs improvement area. One of the things to think about, look at, would be, to me, would be this area right here, kind of about advanced. Okay, we should be having, you know, at least a minimum of twice the percentiles being at the advanced level. Grade three, this is grade three, four, and five. Next slide. There are some pockets of good news. So we take a look at areas that improved. You would take a look at grade three. The grade three, four, and five would be the proficient areas. All right, needs improvement went down in grades three and five. So you like to see, really, we like to see would be this side emptying out into this side. So normally, like you see over time, would be a higher percentage of kids in the advanced category. So one of the, you ask a great question. And so if you look at student work, you would think that, you would like the teachers to do is talk about, okay, what do we have to do to move this group over here? Okay, and this group over here. And that, when you look at student work and you're talking about teaching and learning, that should be done monthly. So when you get these scores, shouldn't be any surprises. I've been saying that. So this is nothing new. I've been saying that a lot since I've been here. And I said it in my former district as well. So it's the same thing. Angela was talking about English language odds, those are needs improvement. This is very striking right here. So what you have in grade four, you have forty-two percent of the kids in this category. So you have, in grade four, forty-five percent of the kids were in needs improvement. Well, forty-two percent of them were really ready to be proficient. They're right in that last scale score. So that bodes well for grade five. What bodes well for grade four is that, can you just go back a few, a couple slides? One, one more? Okay, seventy-two percent of the kids in grade three not going into grade four. That gives grade four a lot to work with. Grade six, seven, six, seven, eight, and ten. Like I was saying before, in grade ten, take a look at, you know, this ninety percent. Take a look at the amount of kids that were at the advanced level. And warning, you have two percent probably a few kids, those are grade scores. This is pretty good as well. This is grade eight. In fact, later on, we're going to show when we do the comparisons, they bode pretty well. What you like to do, what we like to see is more, a greater number of students into the proficient area. Making comparisons. We didn't bode as well as last year. You notice only, the only comparison that we had really was in grade eight. So we showed some movements here into here. And last kids in grade six were in the warning. But still, it looks like it was a regression into the proficient and needs improvement area. Let's see. What was significant about this slide, once again, we're looking at the needs improvement distribution. So in grade six, we're thirty-four percent were in needs improvement. Well, take a look at fifty-five kids. Were in this band right here. That represents thirty-five percent of the students. So in other words, this should bode well for grades up. These kids now are in the seventh grade. So they're right upon the cusp to move. The only thing we have to worry about really is the amount of students that were in this band right here, was supposed to warn. And later on, if you take a look at the distribution here, this tells you who those kids are.
Steve?
Yeah, there's nineteen in that first one, right? Not fifty-five, but nineteen.
There were nineteen students?
Right, yeah. But you took fifty-five, just, you know.
Fifty-five.
Just a point.
Yeah, fifty-five, yeah, fifty-five.
There's a whole nineteen on that stack.
Thank you.
Yeah, bar, whatever that is, bar graph.
You don't even pay attention.
Yeah.
I do that once in a while.
That's all right. Yeah, just attention.
Okay. All right, if we take a look at, you know, six through eight in terms of the amount of students within four points of being in the advanced, that out of the sixty-one percent of the students, okay, that are in the proficient category, make sure I get this right, okay? Out of the sixty-one percent that were in the proficient category, twenty-seven kids represents forty-five percent. So like I was saying, I showed it earlier. For the needs improvement, it's the same thing for proficient, ready to move to advanced. So six, seven, eight, six? I think it was right here. No, I'm sorry, one grade, sorry. Sorry, grades three through eight. So third grade, this is actually really good. Our third graders, I was thinking sixth graders. This is really, really good sign. You have seventy-two percent of the kids who are advanced or proficient. You have a lot of kids ready to be advanced. That's good. That's good. I think that these numbers, these numbers aren't as high as they would like them to be. At least they're in the proficient category. Let's go over here, take a look. You know, and this was, God, it's a warning for sixth, since I'm older here. All right, we like these numbers to be low-digit numbers. Much like they were in English language odds. Here, we have seven, nine, fourteen, twelve, sixteen, seven, two percent. So we want these numbers to be low. If we look at the cohorts going this way, we have a dip, again, fourth grade. The increase from fourth to fifth. We have an increase here from fifth to sixth. Okay, six to seven, all right, dip a little bit from seven to eight. Nice gain here from, you know, over here from fifty-eight over to ninety. High school, but the good news is, as Angela said, our students do well as they move through our system. We just have pockets that we have to really work on. It's nice. There's some nice things up here that you can take a look at. But I'll tell you, I'll tell you what my eye is looking at. If you look over here, so forty-six percent were a comparative community. All right, this is, this is here, fourth grade, eighth grade, tenth grade. That makes me a fifty percent jump. We have significant miles to go here. If we take a look at eighth grade, eighth grade is seventy-three percent. I drop down here, I look at Winchester. Winchester is eighty percent, Newburyport is seventy-three percent. That's where I look at. I'm looking at Winchester. Because not only do they have, their scores are relatively high, but I see a dot coming out somewhere.
Yeah.
A dot coming out quite a bit.
A deditorial.
You're a good man.
You said it in public, buddy, watch out. Took your sword. I'd been on the phone.
But the interesting thing about Winchester's advanced scores are high. Okay, and that one makes a significant. So this is, this is pretty, you know, we're within seven percentage points. This puts you in very good company. And this right here, ninety percent, puts you in excellent company. You're only two percent away. In fact, if you think about in our high school, our English and our math scores are really in a good spot. And so we just have work to do in grade, in grade four, in grade four and five. Okay, the findings. I'm going to go through quickly because this is a recap. We have ninety percent are in the advanced and proficient categories at the high school. Sixty-four percent were advanced. The scores have been steady over five years. We've had improvement, grade eight to ten. And we had all subgroups in the adequate yearly progress. Over at the middle school, we had seventy-five percent in grade eight. And let's stop for one second. If you're going through, once in a while, you'll find that a number, the percentage may be off. Some things don't match, okay? So don't get on your own about it. There's a percentage off because we were looking at, we were updating things right at the last minute to make sure that we have all of our numbers exact. Okay? We have a drop in scores in grade six and seven. We already talked about large numbers of students in the needs improvement category. We have a lot of kids that are in the upper band of these improving in grade six. Stable cohort scores, five to six, six to seven. Students still struggling with short answers, open-ended response questions. Okay, and in the aggregate, some, in some groups did not make AYP. Let me tell you something about AYP. If you don't make AYP, it's a movable bar. Okay, so you're always going against a movable target. All right, elementary, improvement in grade three, actually the highest scores ever. Drop in grade, drop in grade four. Increase from four to five. President score, president did make adequate yearly progress, and the lower school did not. You know, it's really interesting for, I just want to mention something about this math team. The math team, even though they're performing at a high level, and they know that students are really at the advanced level, sixty-four percent. When we asked them to take a look at some of the scores, they were very, very thoughtful in terms of looking at every little thing possible. And he said, okay, we're still going to disaggregate the data, focus on reading the question, understanding the topic, teaching strategies for problem solving, focusing on the guess and check for greater accuracy, and provide MCAS academic support. We do, let's see, for the middle school and elementary, disaggregate the data. Examine for, make sure that we have instructional alignment as well as curriculum alignment. Look at the item analysis. Absolutely have to look at consistency between teachers, teaching the same subject area. And looking at our co-teaching practices. Make sure that teachers have time to whole plan together. Look at the benchmark assess, implement benchmark assessments, and look at ways to incorporate skill development. Take what we know. We know that we have us. I'm a student.
I can't help myself.
I can't help myself. You give me students, you know, abstract, multiply, divide like this, and you're going to have kids that are very good in math. And so only that is the new Common Core talks to. Okay, and so I would say that the elementary schools now are really working hard in that area. We want to monitor, pull out math, do the individual improvement category two. Focus on the math coaching in grades four and five. And continue monitoring the implementation of investigations in kindergarten in grade one. Continue the model discussion, writing about math thinking. Continue to monitor, make sure that there's sixty minutes of daily instruction in mathematics as well as, we didn't put this in here, but there's an extra ten minutes for review. It should be up there.
Ten-minute method.
Oh, there's, implement ten-minute math with fidelity. And let's see, consistency of rigorous instruction across grade levels. And that is grade to grade, teacher to teacher. And much like I said in the past, embed MCAS-like questions and provide students with weekly after-school support. Any questions? Is this the last slide we're done?
I guess I'm perplexed. When I take a look at this slide in terms of action, we're looking at the mathematics. I think few of them are new. They are things that we've been looking at. And yet, in the middle school, we continue to be struggling with our, with our math scores, as we saw particularly with that grade four this year. Are we doing the right kinds of things, I guess is what my question would. I guess if we keep on doing the same things that we've been doing in the past, are we just?
I would say you haven't been doing the same things in the past. I would say things have changed. Several things have changed in duty. I'm not, if you have, if you're inspired to stand and say a few things, please do. But one of the things, Nick, one of the things that, that we know it's been a little different from last year, and I can see it when we walk through classrooms now, is teachers are more confident teaching mathematics at the elementary level. Because grades, all teachers, grades three, four, and five, and all the math teachers in grades six, seven, and eight, participated in a very intense math professional development that started in May. Started in May, okay? So this is the year we should see that. And I think that because of that now, you're, and it was, professional development was on mathematics, not about the program. I think now, so, so it's a little bit different. What else is a little different is I find that teachers are now teaching more with fidelity than in the past.
Can you explain what you mean by that?
If you're going to teach the program, you were saying teach sixty minutes of mathematics with a ten-minute review. Okay, then sixty minutes of mathematics. Okay, not forty-five minutes of mathematics. If you're supposed to teach, let's say this, you're supposed to send this paper home to parents, then that paper gets home, that paper gets sent home to parents.
Is she, is she in the class?
No, I was looking at you. I have to look up.
Oh, okay. I think one of the other things is you may have seen last year similar goals. But some of those goals are really big, and they are not going to be mastered in a year. You know, to be able to model the kinds of behaviors that we want other students to be doing in a math class. We remember we went through the implementation of a consistent program. Okay, this is the first year K's on board. So it's going to take us a little bit of time to see the benefits of that consistency. This is first year, everybody's in full implementation, K through two. Because we worked backwards to make that happen. I think that we also have been really working to build that not only a consistency of program, we spent a lot of time focusing on our program, but really building good math instructional practices in the classroom.
I have a question, though. I know it takes a long time to deconstruct the data. When do, like, let's say you've got someone in one of these grades that tested, and they're on the cusp, and they can get over, they're points away from being advanced. When does this year's teacher find out who those kids are? Because it's now that they would need to be identified so that they have a chance to really get to know that, you know, the particular challenges around that. And that, that takes a lot of resource.
But that is now. They're doing that work in the schools. They're working at different grade levels. And then what they, what they'll do, that's part of disaggregating the data. Once that's done, then they put action plans.
So do you guys have, like, do you have deadlines for that? Do you have?
We're working in different teams. Sometimes we have, we'll use our professional day that's coming up in November to do that. And this year, we're not. So different schools are working at that at different paces. But it's underway everywhere, actually earlier than what we know.
Because you want to talk about GMAID, that was.
Right. The other thing that we're doing this year, which I think you're aware of, is that we're doing GMAID testing, which is another standardized testing. And we're doing that grades K through seven. Now, this is our first year of implementation of GMAID that way. Last year, we piloted it in grade two. We have used it in grade seven for several years as an indicator for moving into eighth-grade algebra. But this year, we're bringing it, we've brought it on K through seven. And those scores are all being used now in data conversations so that they're not only looking at MCAS scores, they're looking at the data that they got from GMAID too, to see what's happening with their students comparing that data. So those data conversations are going to be richer than they have been in the past as well as all the classroom data that's happening in a formative and assumptive way, regular chapter reviews, chapter tests, that kind of thing.
As we start to get into budget discussions and you identify potential, you know, things you need to make it more successful, to, you know, supplement what's going on in there, the earlier we know about that, the better. The earlier we know about that, the better. And I would encourage you to, you know, Judy, let us know.
I was going to say, I think, you know, once we, as we're looking at all this data now, it's nice to look at that, but then there's that big question of, so what?
Right.
So we need to look and have those conversations of, what are the interventions? What do we do? What are the personnel that we need to do that with? Not just a program, but personnel so that we can carry out those next steps and really support those students.
Yeah, if I could just add to that, I want to know, because I've looked some of the literacy actions and the mathematics actions. Specifically with after-school support from classroom teachers, you know, I'd like to know how well that's utilized, how available people are, how well it's utilized, and how much it costs. I think it's important to have, but I also think you want to make sure it gets utilized, make sure children go there. The other question I had was, when we're looking at all the different, I guess it all relates to that, is how, you know, the resources, where are they coming from? To like, you know, with respect to literacy, have more focus on student work, make sure assessment drives instruction, increase the intervention program in grade three to five, and again, the after-school support. Where do those resources come from? Is that something that we're thinking about, you know, at budget season? Or is that something that we're identifying now as an action that we're going to take in the next budget season?
Well, contractually, all teachers are required to give one hour per week after school for curriculum help.
Okay.
And I would say, I would say teachers are doing that.
Okay.
And I would say, I would be expected that a hundred percent of the teachers would be doing that. And we're all working together, the NTA and our principals. We're all trying to, we're all trying to do the same thing with each other.
There was one other question that just popped in my mind. With respect to disaggregated data, I know you're showing the kids that are just off the proficient bands, just a little off. What about those kids who have been proficient and dropped down? Is there a way to identify those kids? In terms of disaggregated data?
Well, it's too big. When we, when we're showing slides up here, we're showing the difference. Those aren't, unfortunately, those aren't the same kids.
Right.
Unfortunately, they're not the same.
I mean, those are avenues, but I mean, do you also, just as you identify those kids in bands that are a few points away from being proficient, are you identifying the kids who have just dropped down? You know, because I think, I think if you look at those children, you can do an extra drill down on perhaps where they were having difficulty with, whether it be related to certain questions or whether it be related to maybe certain things that happened during a school year. I think if you wasn't looking.
I think during the, when teams of teachers are disaggregating the data, we should be looking at whether they actually do that at that level. And that's some of the work that has to be done.
And Steve, as far as the resources for a lot of what you see here, a lot of this has been incorporated in the grant writing for this year. So that's how we're getting many of the resources to build the data teams, to do some of the intervention work. But as we make discoveries in the process, then we'll have to consider that for the upcoming budget process.
Sure, okay, thank you.
And try and squeeze in. We talk a lot about data, and we talk a lot about identifying the subgroups and things like that. The kids in, in these math classes in the fourth and the third, do they stay in the same class? Is one of the components actually taken into consideration, who the teachers? It is, sometimes I could simplify things a little bit. Second of all, second question real quick. Dr. Grover, you spoke of the data and the data gatherer and being surprised, not being surprised. Were you surprised at yet again another dip? What's going on this year?
Just a moment.
So you weren't?
We were hoping for less, less than we saw in the second year.
Well, we didn't really have the data to know.
Right. We did have some data going into it from the work that was done last year in the interim assessment. So we did have some information where we could look at how much growth those students were making. And with the information we had, we anticipated more growth than we saw. One of the things that we saw is originally when we got the preliminary data, it only gave us multiple choice information. And we saw a huge increase, and we were very excited and very hopeful. And then when we got all of the data that included open response questions and short answer questions, it gave us really important information because our students in the early grades are still really struggling with communicating their mathematical thinking through words. And so that brought, when we got, when we had that information to add to the multiple choice data that was, that went beyond computation and into that higher level of thinking of really being able to explain your thinking about what you did. Our students are still really struggling there, and that brought our scores down, and we're still more of a gap. So it gave us important information to know where we have to work, but we were disappointed to see it.
Just something quick. There's been a lot of banter across the Commonwealth on the timing and the weather last year. Not as an excuse, but at what a challenge it posed from, some districts were decimated. I mean, because they were out for so long. We were out for quite a bit. But in terms of the momentum and what you're used to scheduleize, I'm curious if the Commonwealth is giving you, if the DESC is giving you any strategies on what you can do to kind of prepare for things like that. I know it's nothing you can anticipate, but it's definitely something to keep in mind. Because you, you know, and with those breaks in between, there was just a roller coaster of building up momentum, and then you lost a couple of days. And then they were back inside in the classroom, and, and that's not just the elementary kids, that's across the board, it's a challenge.
I just want to highlight one thing. We never talked about the fact that a high school went from block scheduling to this new type of scheduling. You didn't see, but I expect it would be some type of dip, you didn't see the dip. Just really pause. We still science the show. Bruce?
I just had two comments, Meg. One was, it seems to me that sort of going forward, an increased, an increased use of online assignments and online resources may be one way to address some of these unexpected, you know, snow day, little vacation, mini vacations. So there's, there may still be some ways to do that. And several times here, we've talked about, let us know what you need for the budget. Let us know what the resources are. And often, these budget conversations seem very, very abstract. One of the advantages and disadvantages of longevity, particularly here, is that I, I'm looking at this, and I'm thinking about five years ago when we reorganized and we made an extraordinarily compelling case to the community for bringing in literacy coaches. Two in English and Language Arts, two in Math. And when the rubber hit the road and the budget needed to be negotiated, we ended up with two in English and Language Arts and one in Mathematics. So to me, you know, I don't know if it's cause and effect, but I would say that the decisions we're making now as a community clearly are going to have an impact as we move forward. And this is, to me, whether it is or isn't, to me, this is an example of a decision that we made that was driven by money. We had to, and in some ways, you reap what you sow. And I remember those conversations, I remember how much we fought to try to keep two, and we lost that.
If I could just comment, and that happened again last year. We put it back in last year, and it got cut again last year. And I would, I just, as we're having this conversation, I just want to say, it has been amazing what Judy has been able to do working with pre-K through eight by herself. But you're absolutely right, we need another coach desperately. Okay? Science. All right. Our science scores, this is our comparison to the state in the area of science. And I think one of the things that you'll notice as you look across the board for science, for the state and for Newbury Court, the scores are not as high as you see them in the other categories, even with this state level. Our scores for grades five and eight, and I want to remind you again in case anybody has forgotten about this, in grades five and eight, we test all domains of science. So every, in those two years, they're taught, each of the, they're tested in each of the domains of science. And then by grade nine, we are testing just in biology. Okay, so I think that's important because it's a little bit like comparing apples and oranges. It's a very different approach to the science instruction. But as you can see, we're at grades five and eight, we're not that far off from the state. And in a community like ours, I believe we should see a bigger, a bigger difference. Okay, and this is what it looks like when we look at our students in each of the performance levels. We have a huge jump when we get to grade nine in biology in our advanced category. And in our proficient categories, we're getting there. As you can see, but we still have way too many students in grades five and eight in these improvement categories, having needs improvement here. We saw improvement in four categories. And as you can see here, we saw improvement in grade five in advanced and in grade 10 in advanced. We saw reduction in grade 10 in needs improvement and a reduction in grade 10 in math. This is where we look at our distribution of students in the needs improvement. One of the things that becomes very evident when we compare this to what we were looking at for math and ELA is that we've got a more even distribution across the bands in needs improvement. So yes, we do have the majority of our students in the upper band, and we do want to try to move them, but we don't have as high a percentage here in science as we see in other communities. And these are the students that are in the upper band of proficient. Again, we're seeing our highest numbers here in grade 10 and very low percentages here in grades five and seven. And while as we look at our power parts, basically when we look at grades five and eight, our scores are relatively flat. We're not seeing a lot of movement there. We saw a significant improvement in our biology scores from last year to this year. But when we look at grades five and we look at grades eight, we saw a slight decrease, but as we look across the board, our scores are relatively equal. If it helps at all, the other communities are struggling in science as well. Not a big coincidence, but look at our percentages as you even compare through the communities. You know, we're looking at percentages in the fifty percentile and forty percentile. We see great improvement when we get to the high school levels across these communities. We're seeing higher percentiles in our aspiring communities right along the way. But again, when we look at biology in grade nine, Newbury Court is at the top in our comparative and geographic communities and right in the middle, just about as they were for Language Arts in the aspiring community. So when we look at grade nine, we're seeing comparatives very similar to grade 10 in ELA. Okay. Findings, we saw an increase, as I just told you, in, at the high school from last year. We had ninety percent of our students in advanced and proficient. There was a significant decrease in needs improvement and significant growth in the cohort as they moved from grade eight to grade nine. But we have to remember that biology was even more contested. And that is also what they studied in the eighth grade, in the ninth grade year. I think I mentioned what our findings were for the middle school and the elementary school here. Actions, we're going to continue to disaggregate the data. We're going to monitor the achievement of all of the students for pre-building more formative assessments so we can get more information about how the students are doing along the way rather than in the end. It's something that we've been building for the last several years, but we're at a point now where we should have enough formative assessments to start looking at student work together. We're going to continue to provide MCAS support. We're going to monitor the students at the high school who are less than proficient. We're going to work to ensure consistency of instruction, and we're going to examine and analyze common assessments. This is at the high school. At our middle and elementary school, we're going to monitor through formative assessments. We're going to continue to provide students that after-school support. We're going to examine data for instructional alignment. The science standards have just been updated with the state. We're going to be looking at that. We're going to continue to provide instructional coaching at the elementary level. I talked to you last year about the science coach that we brought in at the elementary level to help build teachers' confidence around teaching science because we have to remember at the elementary level, our teachers have been trained as generalists, not specifically in a content area. We need to create more opportunities for co-teaching in science class. I think one of the things we have done is a really good job at thinking about how we co-teach in our literacy classrooms and in our math classrooms. And some of our science teachers have said, what about us? You know, we've got the same students in science class and not the same co-teaching opportunities. So I think we need to create opportunities for that. We need to monitor the consistency of rigorous instruction, embed the MCAS questions, and coordinate vertical curriculum meetings in the area of science. Because science is one of the curriculum areas that is still being tested every three years also. So you have curriculum standards that are written grades three to five, grades six to eight, and they're only tested in five and they're tested in eight. So what you see as a test result at the end of grade five and at the end of grade eight is a result of three years of education. And so we need to create more opportunities for those teachers to be talking across those grade levels because it's really an accumulative score of three years of science research that we see.
Any questions in science? Questions?
Angela and I have walked through classrooms a lot, and I think you would be, our students are working, our teachers are working. We have work to do, absolutely. We have a lot of work to do, but we have a great, we have a great staff, and I appreciate their effort. They think they work seriously. I, the stakes are getting, the stakes are going up a little bit, especially, I think, at the middle school. corrective action, they'll be, one more year, they'll be off corrective action in English. And we have some work to do with mathematics, and we're going to hit off corrective action in mathematics. So I appreciate the work of our principals, our teachers, and all our support staff, our coaches who are here tonight, second grade teachers here from Brezlin, and we have Cam is here. So just wanted to thank them to come out tonight and supporting us. And that's it.
I'd like to have a general question. With the adoption of the court curriculum, what's in the future for MCAS? Where are we going with it? Where's the state going with it? Are we going to rewrites of what we've got? Are we going to go to a more national, tie to the court curriculum version in the future? Social studies coming in next? What are the curveballs we can expand from the state?
There's a plan to phase out the MCAS as we know it in the areas of literacy and math with the new Common Core. And it's designed to go over three, four-year period. And it's designed to go over a three or four-year period. Four-year, remember? It's a three or four-year period. And with this year, there'll be no MCAS because they just got rolled out. So this year, the MCAS questions will be based on the old Massachusetts standards. Next year, there will be a combination of questions, some from the Common Core and some from the state standards. The following year, the questions will be primarily based on the new, on the new Common Core. In the same kind of MCAS format as we know it. But at the same time, the, all of the states who have adopted the Common Core standards are also working on a new assessment system that has got the acronym of HRC, and off the top of my head, I can't remember what that stands for. But, and that, they're hoping will be several times a year. So rather than one assessment in the end, they're hoping to do HRC assessments, which right now they're shooting for three times a year. They started out at four with great hopes for that, but it seemed unmanageable. So right now in your proposal, they're looking at three. So the assessment process will evolve with the standards. And they're paying for that. Right? Yeah, exactly.
I just wanted to make a joke, so.
Need to make the distinction between unfunded mandate and de-funded.
Exactly. That's why my response was. Thank you so much, Angela. And everyone who was involved in the presentation.
We are having our second period of public comment, after which we will just take a two-minute recess. But are there any comments from anybody that'd like to share? Yes, please, thank you.
Hi, my name's Christine and I have a first and a fifth grader. And I just want to do second, I think, Mr. Cole's comment or question or suggestion about the kids who didn't sustain their high scores and may have dipped, but weren't really shown in these dip descriptions. I have a fifth grader, as I said, who had a near-perfect math score in third grade, advanced proficient. I think she missed maybe one or two questions. In her fourth grade MCAS score, she was in the mid-range band of proficient with, you know, possibly to the top-tier band, you know, how they give you the description of the range. So she dipped considerably, but she's not represented in, you know, some of this analysis here. And I just wanted to suggest that maybe those kids or cohorts are, however we refer to them, also do be sort of disaggregated and maybe uncovered because they're also at risk and would be, you know, their improvement would be important and would also help also themselves individually, but certainly the overall scores that we're looking at in the district. So I, it was the dip that brought me here, but it was a different dip. And I just wanted to second Mr. Cole's commentary.
Any additional comments? Dr. Orlando?
Yeah, as always, my comments represent my own and I have a few. The first thing is I think that US school committee members need to be challenged, to challenge them on some of the statistics they've shown you. Whatever it is, the MCAS may not be the best study, but it's, looks like the only one we have unless the school district comes up with other ways of analyzing whether the kids are learning what they need to learn every year we look at MCAS scores. So the first thing about MCAS scores I want to call everyone's attention to, you should take a good look at, is proficient is average. Good enough isn't, and average is over. You know, you've got proficient, needs improvement, and failing. And they've alluded to it a little bit in the discussion because they try to cull out, they put lumped together proficient and advanced into one category and then we try to look at in each one what percentages are advanced. We need to look at whether it's our aspiration communities and what their percentages to advanced are. Because I think a district like this one that spends a good amount of money per pupil, it's slightly above the state average, we have qualified, very good people, we should be striving for advanced and not proficient students. So I challenge you to take a look at what some of the other districts are doing when they lump advanced and proficient together in one category. I personally have some issues if we look at the English. One thing I've said always in public, and I don't know if it's a true statement, but once the kids get through 10th grade, no matter what they've done in the lower grades, they seem to do pretty well. So if we take the finished product, which seems to be the 10th grade high school student, and we look at English Language Arts, we got about a 50% in the advanced category. In math, we got 65% in advanced category. And in science, we got 36%. That's an area I think you need to look at because again, one of the difficulties is all we're testing is biology. What about the kids' knowledge and learning experiences in chemistry or physics? How do we assess those? And I'm not necessarily talking about what an MCAS score is, but are our students learning what they're supposed to learn in a given curriculum in a given subject? That's the critical factor. And I don't think we as a community, if we can talk to Mr. Bennett's comments, should accept proficient or average as the standard by which we would like our students to strive for. The other thing deals along the lines of what some of the things Mr. Cole was saying. You know, you ask, how do you follow some of these things well, or how do you make them better? I'm not an educator, but I've been engaged here for a long period of time and I've done some reading and sort of research on my own. I think what you have to look at is maybe not necessarily each year what the fourth graders do or the fifth graders do and the eighth graders do, but what that fourth grader does, that fourth grader, not the fourth grade, but that fourth grader does from fourth grade to fifth grade to sixth grade to seventh grade to eighth grade to 10th grade. And when you look at things to do to correct, what another analysis you should encourage him to do is to take a look at teacher-to-teacher variability. Does teacher A in subject A do that much better than teacher B in subject A? Because if that is the case, then we need to learn from some of the other teachers who are doing it better. Or on the other hand, does teacher B have an inferior group of students who don't have the basis of the knowledge skills to do as well as teacher with class A? So it's that interclass variability. And then the last thing I really think that you have to put out there for this community, and we always talk about it and we're sort of aspiring to go there, is this whole new technologic craze where we're going to have wireless everything and this and that. If you have a teacher who does it well, what I call the master teacher, and you can find out who they are just by doing the analysis, put that teacher on a video or put every teacher on the video with their class that they gave to Johnny so that when Johnny goes home, if he didn't get it in school, whether he's in fourth grade, eighth grade, or more independent in 10th grade, he can look at that lecture or that assignment or that class or that principle over and over and over again, 600 times if he's a committed, dedicated student, until that 601st time when he gets it. These are the kinds of things that I would like to see happen in this community towards our students. I agree, maybe MCAS isn't the best way to look at this, but certainly trying to judge our kids as being proficient isn't a very good way to look at things either.
Thank you, Dr. Orlando. Thank you very much. Shalom.
Yes, I actually just, I wasn't planning to sort of lead with what Dr. Orlando discussed, but I had a draft email that at the end of the school year, I sort of compiled with a couple of different thoughts. And one of the things that just came to mind with one of Dr. Orlando's last suggestions about engaging the students who have just graduated, which sometimes that happens in deep briefing, but also engaging those students who are in college. Not that that's our exclusive audience because we know that that's not the case and that's where nationally, that's not going to be the case, but we'll put that aside for now. But you know, I was really excited when I had seen that piece about Nick Camerata, who was that, one of those unusual students, very bright, the one who has, has, you know, is starting to work on a very, on a program that's very close to that. And he's, you know, he, it's basically as Ken and I were discussing, it's for those students who are motivated to look at, you know, lecture and use a classroom for questions and dialogue and more didactic type of, you know, education. But those types of lectures, if you could capture those, it may be work. So I'm going to dig up that email and send it back because I think that would be something to explore. That's a new mode of education and that's a high school graduate from Newburyport. And something innovative like that, because I think sometimes we, you know, what we, we do in just listening to this, it's not as though you're teaching to the test, but you're using that test to metrically decide what, how you're going to teach. And, you know, Mr. DeCanta had an ideal question that I don't want to really get into the weeds about in terms of what was it about math and what are you doing now? And this, you know, Dr. Kerbel mentioned core curriculum and I wish that there were more parents here who I had heard about that era of fuzzy math that really didn't work very well and maybe we put aside. And other communities are looking at rocket math along with rocket science, that's, that's really memorization. And we really don't want to go there because although I'm not a parent, but it's apparent to me from just looking at, at the action items, that some of the testing involves, you know, the verbal skills, the ability to comprehend and compose and, you know, basically relate what you've learned and what you know. So even in the lower grades, there's a need for that. But that dovetails so well with what we were talking about in public conversation. If we go from just theater into what I know that Dr. Kerbel is looking at in terms of not only foreign languages and, you know, the cognitive skills, but also looking at theater, the ability to just not be scripted, but to actually go ahead and start to look at, you know, presentation and perform, 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 the mantra that was lost, you know, January in the forums for both foreign language and, and, you know, performing arts, perform, perform, perform. And I think once the students are, you know, just not sitting there panicking because perhaps they think they don't test well, you know, to really be able to have that conversational skill that, so as you start to develop. But I think creatively, and I was really intrigued with the piece in the Daily News about Nick Camerata, I think I had a seat, correct, to, you know. And so as I said, you know, I know from my nephews in Lynnfield, when, when I was speaking with them after, which they thought it would be valuable if, within their own school committee, if they could come back. Because we, we seem to have, bouncing back to Dr. Kerbel's December 6th superintendent entry plan, when he was talking about complacency. We in Massachusetts have almost become complacent to think, you know, we're doing so well. And yet if you ask some of those college students, as I'm sure many of you have, physics, I mean, all of us, we're doing well if you're just testing in biology to bounce off of what Dr. Orlando just said, that's not the whole package. So I mean, as I said, if, if there's, I've sort of like gotten into the weeds here, but there's some seed of thought there to really think outside the boxes we're going and go beyond just the metrics. Because it's not just diametrically opposed if you start to think of these other things. You think of system metrics, systematically what is involved, but also, you know, thinking outside the box and other ways of gauging students in a creative way.
Thank you. Is there any, are there any additional comments? Superintendent has asked for a sort of two-minute recess, so I think we'll take a two-minute
The next item on the agenda is an MSBA update, pinch hitting for Peter Powell. I don't want to put any pressure on the guy. Well, the school building committee unanimously voted for the architects of a company called HMFH from Cambridge, Massachusetts, as the architects for our model Brezner hand school project. They designed and built the East Fairhaven model school, which East Fairhaven themselves, or Fairhaven themselves actually is building that school again, so will actually be the third iteration of that school. It was a wonderful process. We interviewed all four architect firms. The building committee sat at the end of the last interview and systematically went through what was good and what was bad about each presentation. And then we took votes on eliminating architect, the proposals that we didn't feel would, would fit Newburyport and subsequently came up with HMFH, which is worth noting, they also were the most economical per square foot model school that, that was available to us. So I think the committee did a, did a very good job in taking the data from the site visits, taking all the information we had in hand. I think the committee did a wonderful job and picked this, this company from Cambridge. They have also, they've built schools in, down in the Cape, Sprague Elementary School, they've built elementary schools in Gouston, Truro, down in the Cape. They actually have primarily built elementary schools. A lot of the other firms build high schools, middle schools, public buildings. This company is primarily elementary schools. So we're excited about that. The next step is the negotiation of the fleet proposal. Deidre Steve and Tony Pruner, our OPM representative from Erie, will be meeting with HMFH to negotiate and make recommendations to the mayor. We are now, believe it or not, getting ready to send the request for services process for the NOC MOLIN. So here we just didn't really even get a chance to breathe. Now we're going to start the whole process over again with a, with a NOC MOLIN. I don't know if that is enough information for you. I've touched on it, but I don't know if you guys have some, you have some fingers here so I think you have something to add?
I do, I do have something to add. There was a group of administrators and teachers, parents, school committee member who visited each of the four schools, each of the four model schools that we had to choose from. Their opinion, I think, was a key point to what was considered by the, by the building committee. I had the good fortune of being the school committee representative that visited the East Fairhaven school. And I'm very, very excited about the choice. They were all good choices for the community. I could see any one of those buildings actually fitting here. But what really sold me on Fairhaven wasn't the building, but the way people acted inside. The teachers were happy with the building. They loved their classrooms. The teachers that we had visited, visiting were excited, excited about what they saw. When we walked into the lobby, Christina Davis, our principal at the Brezner hand school, almost, her face almost looked so full of joy that it was, I'm home! You know, it just really led me to believe that this is going to be a fantastic place for our kids. It's going to be a happy place, colorful, full of whimsy, full of excitement and engagement for kids that age. I think this, the building committee did not make a good choice. I think they made a fabulous choice. And then congratulations to you and the rest of the committee for doing that. And thanks for the hard work that went into it.
Absolutely. I also have a copy of HMFH, which for some reason it's very difficult to say. But I have a copy of their proposal here if you're interested in looking at it. It's got some interesting pull-ups. It has some, some sort of brainstorm parking flow ideas, site placement, floor layout, although there are a lot of, a lot of things that can sort of be maneuvered in the basic design.
Was that the group that years ago did a estimate for the Bres? Back in '04?
No, I don't, I, I don't know.
It's in my report at home. I have that.
It's one of the principals named Bob Vogel.
Right in front.
Bob Vogel. No. I know they were from Cambridge.
Laura Warnick, Pip Lewis, Tina Denis, and Dom Lee.
Okay. Maybe it's a different, because I know they were from Cambridge as well, that outfit that did it before. did it before.
Any other questions for Dan? Thank you. It's very exciting. The superintendent and I have whispered back and forth to each other and we think we might need to actually vote on this and given that, to accept the hiring of the architectural firm. And if our experience, our previous experience holds, I'm sure that MSBA has an exact form that they want us to use. But in the interest of drawing a line in the sand, I would suggest that we, I would take a motion that we approve the hiring of the architectural firm that was recommended by the building committee. Can you make that motion?
I move that we accept the, the new report, school building committee's unanimous vote, voting HMFH as the architect for the Brezner Hand Elementary School Project.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a point of, of order here. I think it's a good thing that we take this vote as a vote of support, but the discussion at the building committee meeting was that the school committee vote was not required because it's a city project until such time as it's completed and then we vote to accept it. So, but I think this is-
I mean, that's, that's my understanding, but this is-
We just add the, Nick and I talked a little bit about it the other night. It just so happened after I talked to Nick, I talked to Chad, Chad Eaton from MSBA. And I, and I said, "Chad, do we need, the school committee need to vote?" He said, "Yes, but not necessarily that night." I said, "We were meeting Monday." He said, "It'd be a good idea to vote Monday."
Oh, it was voting. I love it.
So, yeah, whether or not, apparently we have, we have a verbal advisory day, certainly the prudent thing to do.
Yeah, it depends on who did that.
If we want to continue to vote on things we don't need to, and then we have a nominee for the manager of the Red Sox. Is there any further discussion?
We won't have a period of public comment.
Yeah, we do. It'll be a long-
A hearing, a hearing.
A hearing. Any, any discussion? Very exciting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great. We need to re-vote using their language.
So do we.
So we're unrecorded at the time. Thank you. We have the, we have in our packet the resolutions from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. And this is usually the one, point of the year when I allow myself sort of leaving a roll of my eyes. However, I don't know if this year we have anybody who's actually going to go down and vote on it. We have. Steve has in the past, I have in the past as well. I don't plan on going down to the MasC Conference this year.
I may, but I mean, I haven't, I obviously haven't signed up yet, so I mean-
Wait, do you, I mean, if seventy-five, twenty-five?
Well, no, no, I mean, if, if, if the, if the committee, I mean, I can make arrangements to go. I mean, you know, just, I know that there was some plans about perhaps another number of them. I didn't know where that all stood, so.
If we're gonna, if, if it does look like either you or somebody else, or maybe you and somebody else are going to go, then we should probably just go over the resolutions and give some instructions. Dan, you have a question?
No, I would just offer, if no one was going, I could possibly make arrangements to go.
Okay. Well, it does sound, it does seem like then we should send whatever delegates need to go with some instructions. If we could go through the resolutions really quickly, I did take a chance to read through them. I don't want to, I don't want to misquote them. If anybody else has spent more time with them than I have, please feel free to correct me. The resolution, first resolution is provide greater access for students to exploratory visits to Chapter 74 approved vocational programs. And it seems to be a very esoteric motion having to do with allowing, as best I can tell, allowing schools to consider these visits time on learn. That was my understanding. If anybody else had another understanding. Intent of this resolution is to provide clarity to 603 CMR 27.07 by requiring exploratory visits for eighth grade district middle school students to participate in alternative simple vocational schools, those kinds of-
Require them, is? I didn't see that. To allow-
Should be the accepted method. I believe this should be the accepted method of providing or requiring exploratory visits to eighth grade middle school students. Sponsors believe this should be the accepted method of providing exploration experience in vocational technical education.
I don't know whether this, this, I believe it's to the point. We have a gem in the Whittier Vocational School that I think is not considered an option by students who may want to consider it an option. We have talked, Steve, you and I were talking about that after our last visit, is how do we allow students to see what opportunities are available to them through Whittier? And then with that, we had some level of commitment from Whittier to say that admissions should not be a big issue if we have interest in people who want to go there. So the question is, how do I identify those students that should go to visit the school and find out about it and facilitate that visit? I don't know whether all, that means all students need to go to Whittier, however, and take a visit.
Yeah, I, this seems to me to, to acquire that sending districts arrange for exploratory visits for, for eighth graders.
I, I think the schools should arrange for those visits, but not necessarily. They're all students, I guess it's-
I mean, I, I'd like to think that we could, if you will, you know, determine that ourselves. School, you know, our student district should be able to make that determination and have, you know, the middle, you know, essentially it'll be middle school administration kind of joining that process and help us decide the numbers.
At least for, for those members who've expressed an opinion on it, it seems to be that we would either vote no on this or send delegate with, with instructions to figure out really what this means, knowing how we feel about it. Cast a vote.
Yeah, because I think it's great to give the kids access to the school and give them a tour, but if you're talking about busing the whole eighth grade over there, you actually are talking about a serious expenditure and making that a requirement is something that I think should be dealt with more at the local level as opposed to just saying it across the board.
So it does actually, it does, this does not seem like a resolution you would support.
I might be reading it wrong.
No, no, I mean, I think it's very clear.
It's something we already see right now.
Every eighth grade, every eighth grader-
We don't, not nearly as strongly as we should.
Exactly. But we do, I, I kind of read it as they were requiring the district to make it available. They were requiring the district-
I think a lot of school districts follow this regulation, 603 CMR, and they release the names of the students and then the voc tech school in that region probably can send out information to them. What they're trying to do is make it a requirement that you're actually getting them to the school to see it.
Every eighth grader goes to that-
Which again is a great thing, but if they're saying you have to do that for your entire eighth grade class, that's something-
No, yeah, I understand that.
So it, it does seem to be the spirit of the, this school committee that we wouldn't support anything, make business mandatory as part of the exploration. Resolution number two, teacher evaluation. The, the goal of this resolution is that with the new teacher evaluation process that's being put in place, and I think, if this is the one I think it is, all of the additional requirements that are brought to bear in the roles of administrators and supervisors, it seems to me that they're creating a train, they're suggesting that leadership of teaching staff be enhanced to include training and state administratively certified instructional leaders, department heads and supervisors. That, that I think they're saying that, that the evaluation should not just be limited to direct supervisors. That you identify a core of teachers who are teacher leaders and they are part of the evaluation process as opposed to the current system, I think, which is pretty much superintendent's, I'm sorry, union principals. Does anybody have a different understanding of what they're suggesting here?
No, it seems to me like it's just another way of asking for more Chapter 70 money for you.
We'll get to that one.
No, it's part of the resolution.
So essentially, the resolution will correct that deficiency, the deficiency being the burden of the implementation of the recommendations, provide an improved career ladder for teachers and decrease the trust gap that currently exists in the evaluation of teachers. So it's a resolution that creates a way for teacher leaders to be trained to participate in the evaluation process. Anybody have any thoughts now that we've clarified exactly what it is?
I just think with all the stuff that's going to be going on with redoing the evaluation, that's such a work in progress right now, that these are good intentions, I personally think, but I don't know what, something like this is actually going to, how far it will succeed on the floor.
Or how timely it's going to make the proposed changes occur. So now you're talking about a whole nother level of determining, and you know, perhaps it is a good idea to do, and I believe it's a good idea to, to resource it with some Chapter 70 money, but you know, how important it is to get, how important is it to get this evaluation system underway? And you know, is this just going to drag it out from its start?
We have some revisions about this one. Is that a fair summary?
I think I understand this new evaluation system, it's, it's limited to principals and assistant principals or equivalent. These are the folks that will now evaluate teachers. The department heads will no longer evaluate. Okay? And so this resolution supports others other than principal and the assistant principal or equivalent, which I think is good. Do I mean this as a thing?
But just, I guess the whole loop of training now, what is that? Because it, it looks to me that they're now going to need to be, well, I guess they're already certified. I guess they're already certified, so certification-
Yeah, but actually nobody's certified because they haven't stated the new way they're going to evaluate teachers yet, have they? On the new ones, I mean, currently you're, you're evaluated by your building principal or you're, correct? Or the assistant principal, correct?
Currently, currently departmentship at the school.
Okay. So if they redo the evaluation, even those people need to be trained on how to do it, right? That's all I'm saying here is that we don't even know, there's a lot of things-
You have to be, you have to be certified, you have to be a certified in order to evaluate, you have to be certified administrative.
I guess the one thing I like about the resolution, or the main thing I like about the resolution, is the language around for an appropriate number of teachers, you know, to be supervised, because I think that's what kills you, the ratios.
I think if Dr. Kerbel thinks it's a good thing, I move that we vote to support this one.
Support superintendent's recommendations.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
No.
Actually, I've taken a vote on it.
We didn't vote on the other one, so.
Pardon? No, no, it's fine. You can vote me as well. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, it's, it matters. The next resolution, resolution number three on charter school funding is, is, this year it's sponsored by Blosser, it's sponsored by many other schools over the years. Essentially, it is resolved that our position of Mass Association School Committees are that funding mechanism for funded charter schools be changed and that it be funded by its own line item out of the budget. And that, I assume that would mean that more funding through Chapter 70, although this resolution doesn't say that. Clearly implies that. Do I have a motion to approve?
To support that?
To support this resolution.
I move that our delegate support resolution number three.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Any further discussion? I, this resolution is a fairly simply written resolution and it actually reflects something that I've been saying for ten years, so.
Amazing, how simple it is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Again, this is not, this is not a resolution to defund charter schools or make any judgments on charter schools. It is simply a resolution recommending that the funding formula be different than it is. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution number four is an act-
Can I ask who made that motion?
Nick.
Okay, I'm sorry, Nick.
Resolution number four is a freeze on federal regulations pending the reauthorization of No Child Left Behind. There is a lot of language in here about why no child left behind and adequate yearly progress are not really good measures of student progress. There has been, I know, a great deal of talk about the potential for some school systems to get waivers, to wave out of adequate yearly progress, the belief being that Massachusetts would probably be at the top of that list because our schools are, do quite well. And in fact, increasingly because there's so little room for us to move, we're finding ourselves getting stuck here, all kinds of regulations and regulatory processes. Anybody read this any differently than that?
No, I move to approve Resolution four.
Second. Second. Any conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The resolution number five is the state educator evaluation process. And I think this is a resolution to basically say, if you want us to do evaluations the way you want us to do, show us the money. That this should not be another unfunded name there. Although I don't think the words are used actually in the resolution, which is between the lines, it's a resolution. We have a motion to approve this.
I'd like to defer or get an opinion from the superintendent on this one.
Mark, if you're still awake, you're on the hot seat.
I'm trying to, could you explain this?
Yeah, I think essentially, essentially they are saying that we have a new, a broad and sweeping set of standards for education, educator evaluations, and that there will be considerable cost of principal, professional educator and administrative time, legal expense for negotiations and other costs. Therefore, be it resolved at the mass petition to legislation to fund the full cost of implementing these regulations.
Absolutely.
Is that good enough for-
It's good enough for me.
All right. We have a motion, right? And it's seconded.
So moved.
Second.
Supposed superintendent's recommendation for resolution five.
Is there any further discussion?
May I ask on your resolution one, ask delegate to get further explanation, is that what you're saying?
Right.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Is empowered, is empowered to cast the lead base-
The delegate to take the decision.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I, I, this is just an annual trial of AAA for me.
Actually, this was better than last year.
Oh, yeah.
Much better.
Oh, yes.
Well, I think there were, I think there were eight less resolutions than there were last year, as I recall.
Last year we had some pretty ass of reports, too.
Yeah, okay. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Thank you. What I'm going to do is I'm giving you an, an update on the agenda items for the year. That's what I'll do, at least.
Okay. Thank you.
So that, I'm going to go with myself. The MAS C resolution vote was taken tonight, so we scratched it out of the business section of the underwritten number.
Unless we feel we need to re-vote them in November.
Okay, I have a number of items and I'll go through them quickly. The update on the naming of the Low Field Committee, the committee is meeting next week. I received a number of emails and I will share that with you in November. I thought that, I thought that committee meeting was going to be this morning, but I got a scheduling conference for some people, it's Saturday, have it next week. I went to a forum sponsored by Anna Jakes and the theme was concussion. It was sponsored by Anna Jakes, the Newburyport Board of Health and Newburyport Public Schools. Thought it was excellent. The number of people there was, it was about a dozen. Unfortunately, it was the same time that the middle school had its open house. But I just wanted to recognize Anna Jakes, you know, for sending wonderful people over and they did a great job. There is a, there's going to be, as a follow-up to the networking luncheon, there are plans in place to make connection between our educators and the business. And I have the hands that is going to be contacting teachers and speaking to them during their, during the faculty meetings, as well as reaching out to the business community, those around the network luncheon and just trying to bring people together. So I just want you to know that there is an action that's taking place. Went to a GLAC meeting last week and that was a four-hour marathon. And the reason why I keep bringing this up, and every time I go to a meeting, I'm gonna come back and report that out to you, is that we know that the American Education Center found themselves in a little bit of trouble. That was in the paper, a lot of publicity around the, you know, people overseeing, Matt, we're just going to pay attention to the details, I just want you to know that. There's a lot of attention to details they collect. I am, I don't know how this happened, but I'm chairing the personnel committee at GLAC and will have a say in terms of who will be the next director of GLAC. So I, along with others, recommended that reopen the search after January and look for, you know, look for a new director.
For those of our viewing audience who are not familiar with that, could you tell them how GLAC is?
GLAC is the Royal Lawrence Educational Collaborative and they run a number of alternative programs for special needs students that cannot be run in the public schools. We run a number of our own programs. We, we send kids, not that many, but we send a number of kids to the GLAC program. And there's a number of services that they have there, Philly besides complex, and they have multiple sites. I was, right now there's interim director who's excellent, she's a lot of experience, Anna Booth, and, Anna Booth rather, and I believe Anna, Anna Booth, I believe, I wish Anna could stay on, but I doubt she can. And that, and this, the only thing I will say is that they had a lot of issues surrounding, you know, business and payroll organization that has been cleaned up quite a bit by a person that they brought in. So I'm feeling, I feel very confident in terms of where the GLAC program is going. Has its own issues and keep, every time you look at it, there's an onion that's being peeled away, but I'm confident that it's gonna, that it's on the right road. Next thing I want to talk about is, and Angela just weighed in, I'm gonna be quick about this, but you want to add, please do. Educators, Inc., now Educators is a company that works with districts to bring international students. They are like the, how could, like the middleman, so they're like the agents. And what they do is they work with other countries and families. And we are, right now with Angela and Mike Parent, the principal of the high school, I'll bring up the paperwork for five slots for this year. The families pay Newburyport's tuition. The families pay the host, it is, will be five host families in Newburyport so that students can, you know, stay with somebody in the city. And let's see, Batake, there's quite a few districts that have already been doing this, Batake does it. No, is it Amesburg? Ames, Amesburg or Batake?
Batake.
Batake? I'll give you a sense, I know about this from Hockington, Hockington's in their third or fourth year, they're accepting something, I think they're looking at fifteen to twenty students. You know, twenty, you know, fif, just take ten times your tuition, okay? And twenty times your tuition gives you quarter of a million dollars, pretty good money. The other thing too is you have a say over the application process and the, and you have a say over the students who come in. Understanding English is a, is a big requirement for us. Do you want to add anything?
The way that Mr. Parent wants to conduct the interviews of the students is through Skype so that he can actually have a conversation with them, which I think is a really good idea. And the paperwork would hopefully open the doors for us to start this next year. So next fall would be, actually summer, I think the students come to have a little inspection before the actual school year. But it really seems like a very exciting opportunity. If there's a local coordinator for the families and the schools, makes something that makes this unique is that the schools have a final say about the student being able to stay in the country. So if something really goes awry, the school still has a say in that. Where oftentimes in exchange programs have, have they now to the case?
The student only can stay at Newport High School for one year, one year only. So we are, we're going to experiment, I'm gonna bring more information to you once we're further down the road. But we're looking at, you're right, September two thousand twelve.
There's, just a comment, quick comment on that. A lot of those students probably want to come here to either learn or perfect their English language skills. So one of the things that I'd be interested in is seeing how, what understanding English means and how far we want to go with that, because we might be closing out some very interesting candidates. And some very interesting experiences for our own students.
One of the reasons, Nick, that was a consideration was because of our own resources in the district to really address the needs of a student who's really struggling with English. And so that's why that was a priority.
Well, it makes sense to me, I just said, I think we need to be, so I think what we're looking for are students who want to perfect their English more than learning the English language.
It was interesting for us to hear the variety of reasons why students like to, many students like to come for their senior year as a way to hope, as a way to open doors to entrance into colleges.
The, just want you to know that the calendar ad hoc committee met once and then a meeting again in a couple of weeks. So I just want, we just got started, we shared some materials, that's basically the extent of it. That's it for me, thank you. Oh, one last thing, I'm sorry. Open house at the middle school and the Morgan School, talking to the principals, they thought it was a great opening. This guy Rocky said there were somewhere between five to six hundred tenants in attendance, the largest since he's been here. And then Lorene Marx, the principal of the Morgan School, she was very happy with the open house at the Morgan. And the teachers couldn't say enough about Lorene and everything that went on that day.
The assistant superintendent's report. How much did he offer him, anything on Deirdre?
I'm gonna ask Angela to talk a little bit about the data leadership academy. But for Deirdre, Deirdre and I met for an hour and a half this afternoon. So apologize for Deirdre not being here, his family situation she wanted to take care of. I just want, once again, I'm gonna say this, I'm gonna say this every other week, but I want to thank Deirdre for her work on the MSBA projects. Having the, you know, two days of arranging all the trips and a raging time for the architects to present. It's a lot of work. And she's, you know, she and I talked today about, well, when, when does the district get its assistant superintendent back? Or, and, or is this gonna be part of her position now? And so we're gonna talk about that further in discussion with the project manager and the project director, as well as the mayor and the vice chair this weekend. Because looking down the road, it seems to just be an awful long walk even though you have a project manager. Mr. Deirdre was explaining to me. So she wouldn't say that is part of the assistant superintendent's people, but I, since you've asked me, I'm lucky enough to be. Angela?
Okay. I think maybe a month ago I talked to you about a structure that we had put in place for building data teams this year. And the first step of that professional development was training administrators so that they could help lead the teams of teachers that are going to be trained in their buildings. So a week ago, we had our administrative academy on using data, Leadership Academy, and we all got to meet our trainer that's gonna be working with us from Turk. And we spent a full day together and we got to experience a piece of the training that the teachers will experience. And I think the real benefit from it was that this was the first time we sat around a table and really focused on student data. The consultant and I had talked about some data that we might be able to look at and so she really pulled together our own data about our own students and she taught administrators how to go through a drilling process of really drilling down in the data and looking for some specific information and figuring out how you want to present that in a visual way that everybody else can understand. And it was great afterwards, I had several principals say to me, that was my favorite part of the day, just have the time to really drill down in that data and think about what implications that has for the work that we're doing in the classroom every day. So it was a pretty powerful day, it was a little overwhelming, there was a lot of information. Generally, the Leadership Academy for administrators is a two-day process and we reduced it to one, trying to be guard administrators in their buildings and not pull them away from their staff and be kind to some of that. So I think it was a success. It helped us reframe our thinking about the structure of the data teams a little bit because the more we learned, the more we analyzed the direction in which we were heading. And so we started to refine that process and that was really good because that was a collaborative effort in refining the original proposals. So the job descriptions have been put out and posted for the teachers and we've got several people who have applied thus far. We haven't closed those applications yet, we're still accepting applications from teachers. And then we're going to really sit down and make decisions about, you know, that piece that Dr. Kerbel refers to so frequently about getting not only the right people in the bus, but having them in the right seats to meet the objectives of what each of the building data teams need to be. So it's a very exciting time, I think it was a worthwhile day and it framed the work that's ahead of us and I think generated a lot of excitement about where we're headed.
Thank you. Stephanie, do you have anything you'd like to add since we are meeting assessment?
Yes, if you'd say it for one second.
We will not be having an executive session tonight.
Okay, reminder that this Sunday at starting, I think it's starting, it says eleven to six. Up at Spencer Pierce Little Farm is the, now I guess we call it the Fall Family Music Festival. The NEF is sponsoring, EJ Lett and Crazy Maggie, Whole Music Artist Review, Liz Frame and the Kickers and Das Pintos will be there. They're gonna have kid activities from the Newburyport Mothers Club. It should be a great day. If you don't have tickets yet, please go to newburyportef.org and you can find ways to get online and pay online. And then of course, November nineteenth, Saturday night, it's the NEF auction, the fourth annual. We are doing an online component this year. And there will be some items that will only be available online. We'll also be having the night of the nineteenth, a silent auction as well as the live auction. So I would urge you to look at the website, again, go to newburyportef.org, that's the NEF website. And you'll see the link to the auction website and you can start looking at some of the items that the most generous people, I gotta say, Newburyport has the most generous business community and generous, just people in general have been really digging down deep and giving amazing gifts that you'll have the opportunity to bid on and all proceeds will go to the schools. It should be a great night and I gotta hit up Dr. Kerbel for something fun.
I have something fun.
Okay. By the way, you can get a ride to school in a Ferrari or a fire truck or a police car, whatever you like. And thank you as always, NEF.
What if your school's in Miami?
As long as we're not, as long as you're not doing a ride from school in a police car, I think we'll be all right. If there's no further business, I would be...
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Happy to entertain a motion to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.